Good evening. Welcome to the March 28th council meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Sarcissi?
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Mulner?
Here.
Okay, um, next we... Do we have any minutes, Josephine? I don't have...
What do we want to do the cajun on that for?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I don't have that on my sheet here, sir. At any rate, I'm shown that it's 7:40 PM and Ms. Sarcissi has called a roll, so I'd like to ask our council president, Ken Martin, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Nick Mulner will say tonight's invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Union, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our calls, for sustenance and for friendship. Amen.
Okay, um, now, as far as minutes, do we have any minutes to accept, Josephine?
Yes, there were the February 28th and the March 14th.
All right, do I have a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion on for the meetings from February 28th and March 14th as prepared by the clerk of council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Abstain from the March 14th.
As can sure Mr. ...
As can myself as well.
All right, um, moving on to the next order of business, I'd like to ask our council president, Ken Martin, to join me in the front. We have a proclamation for our basketball team. Coach, you want to come up and join us? Okay. Yeah. Okay. This is a proclamation for the Nordonia Boys' varsity basketball team, whereas we acknowledge that active participation in organized athletics is influential to building good character and teaches a wholesome sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth, and whereas in order to accept in anyone's court, a young person must demonstrate an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and whereas a vivid example of this has been brought to our attention by the achievements of the Nordonia varsity boys basketball team, who set a new school record playing in a Division One regional semifinal game play. Now therefore, I down from the mayor of the city of Macedonia to hereby proclaim Thursday, March 28, 2013, as Nordonia Day in our city, and extend to them my personal congratulation and also to those of all our citizens who appreciate the team's athletic prowess and wish them success in all future competitions. Ken, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I just want to point out that I had an opportunity to attend quite a few games this year, Coach Cash, and I know you a little bit better than most, and a lot of people don't realize what a great motivator you are, and at the same time, you stress that our student athletes, that they concentrate on their studies first and athletes on second, but nonetheless, you're able to get them to achieve great things, outstanding things on the court. Um, I went to that heartbreaking game in Athens when we lost to Brexville, and I have to say that despite how disappointed our kids were, they conducted themselves with dignity and integrity, and that's something that they're going to have with them for the rest of their lives, those important things that you have taught them. You've done a great job, I think. I think the team went further than it had ever gone, and I think it was more than 20 years. So thanks for bringing on the joy and hope and to this community, because you really brought us to a new level. Thank you very much, Coach Cash. Thank you.
Thank you, and for each one of your players, there is a symbol of Macedonia, city of Macedonia. Give that to them with all our thanks. All right? Thank you.
Just on behalf of the boys' basketball team, myself, and Athletic Administration around Becker Road, I'd like to thank all of you, especially for the Brexville game at the Jar. The atmosphere, the community support involved, it was just electric, and it was fun to see that, not being associated with the basketball program for now over 10 years, as a seventh grade freshman and changing coach. I have the pleasure of coaching his son, who went on to great things in the military, et cetera, comes back and supports us as well, and I just want to thank everybody here for the support, especially Mr. Martin, because I've known him for seven years now, and just the support that he shows and that the community showed this year was excellent, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
That Ohio State team's ready to start.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Let me remind everyone that there is a five-minute limit on public comments. You do need to sign up. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. We're going to start with Jim Zabel this evening. Jim?
Jim Zabel, Brookshire Drive, Macedonia. I want to make a few comments about the Ohio Public Employee Retirement System Ordinance, the OPRs. Looking at this, you're talking about having to increase your pay to meet the House bill regarding the minimum salary required to be able to participate in the Ohio requirement, uh, retirement fund. At this time, it's $250 minimum, as you all know, to be able to contribute. You have to make $250 a month, and then you get full-time credit for the retirement system. Actually, it's Senate Bill 323, not House bill, from my research. Uh, that's a 178-page bill that talks about increasing that $250 per month minimum salary to $600 per month. Uh, that $600 per month is basically going to allow you to participate full-time with the retirement benefits. Uh, in my opinion, this is unnecessary legislation, because what we're doing here is, basically, we've got another situation where you guys are giving yourself a pay raise, just as you did before with the health insurance. So this is unnecessary legislation, because you can still contribute to the retirement fund, it'll just be on a part-time level. So if I'm not mistaken, the six times 12, your salary will go from about $5,000, I believe, annually, to $7,200 annually, to be able to take these benefits, and I think it's a bad idea, um, because my understanding of reading this bill also cites that there will be automatic pay increases every year. That number of 600 as a minimum is going to automatically go up, and that tells me, with that being the case, that you're going to want to automatically meet that minimum as well. Uh, and basically what we're doing here is we're just giving you guys pay increases annually, if that's how I understand this to be. Uh, I just don't think it's a good idea. I think it's another opportunity for you guys to raise your salary, or, uh, in the words of Mr. Markman, you know, I guess you're asking Macedonia residents to pony up money to get full-time retirement benefits. So, uh, just be aware of that, let the community be aware of that, that this is an issue that I don't think is necessary, and I think the money could be better served for the community. Thank you.
All right, uh, next speaker on the agenda is Sylvia Hannigan.
Sylvia Hannigan, Hampton Drive, Macedonia. I just want to confirm that I spoke to Senator LaRoe's office this afternoon on this particular issue of the OPRs raise, and I did get a copy of the legislation that was signed by Governor Kasich last September, and it is, in fact, basically generating an annual increase in the minimum, and my understanding, from looking at the research, was that they wanted to increase, basically, the basic amount of money you have to put in the system to get full-time credit, because actuarially, it hurts if we have a lot of people at the lower level in the system, and they're getting full-time credit. So it's really a, a process by which to make the whole OPR sounder financially, to do this, and I generally agree with the comments that were made by Jim Zabel. I think that even if we would raise them for next year, then we've got the issue of every following year, you're going to have to raise it in order to meet that minimum standard of how much you can get credit for to get a full-time pension credit. So I think that has to be looked at pretty carefully. I don't think it's a good idea to try to chase that dream, so to speak. Uh, I really wanted to comment on another ordinance that was passed last week. Uh, Mr. Barker and Mr. Mulner were not here, but, uh, this has to do with the increase, there was, I believe it was 5/20/13, that increased the non-resident membership fees by $50 annually, and I checked into this because there was confusion, I thought, at our work session a week ago about how much it costs to join the mainly competitive center that we deal with in this area, which is Twinsburg. And Twinsburg, I checked, uh, what their non-resident memberships are, it's $552 annually and for a family, and it's $348 annually for an individual. So, in fact, ours were 550 and 340, so they're almost the same, and when we add our additional $50 to the membership cost, we are actually costing more than the Twinsburg memberships. And because we're doing that, and whether that's a good idea or a bad idea, it did pass, and, but I'm concerned that we want to, we need to have the non-residents join our center for a number of reasons. One is, we're breaking even with the memberships now, and a lot of those are from outside of our city, number one, and that's how we're maintaining the building. The other, the other thing is that if we start charging people, as is being proposed by the new ordinance, which is 37/2013, which calls for a $100 fee, I gather, on non-resident, non-members, if I understood what was being discussed earlier, the concern I would have is if we have people who are visiting and you're going to charge them $100 even to participate, I think we're discouraging outside memberships and people experiencing our rec center and then thinking, oh, that's a good place, I should join that, and therefore, we're automatically suppressing our membership growth if we do that. So my personal view is, I didn't think it was a good idea to cost more than Twinsburg, basically, and I think it's a bit, it's just generally a bad idea to dissuade further memberships being attracted to other people outside of our city. So just my thought on it, I thought we ought to know about that, and we ought to then, and I, I put it out on maxivic.org, the comparison of these fees, so want everybody to know that there is a risk that we could basically price ourselves out of our main competition market here. Thank you very much.
I got a question for Scott. Mr. Schwab, I got a question. Um, reference the OPRs adjustment, the legislation doesn't say anything about a yearly adjustment. Is there something in the state law that was passed that is going to go, is going to rise from 600 per year and continue to go up? Is there something in there like that?
No, sir. I'm unaware of that, and if I can make a comment on that, I know PRS hasn't raised their credit, I believe, at least eight years. It's been 3,600, you would be able to receive a full-year's credit, and I believe at least through 2003. So whether anyone can surmise that the credit will be constantly raised, you know...
It's in the bill.
It's in, but did, did it actually say a cap every year?
Yes. I totally...
I don't think we should be debating this issue, Mr. Schwab. I mean, we have a resident here who, uh, you know, you take a lengthy Senate bill, these are things for our law department to determine.
Sure. I just want to point out, this is not an increase for sitting council. This increase would be for people newly elected, so no one here is giving anyone an increase.
Are you asking that we hold on with the law department, uh, and you come to report back to us on that issue?
Yeah.
Moving on, John Casmer.
John Casmer, Chinook Trail, Macedonia, speaking for the Longwood Manor Historic Association. Uh, I've got, I've got a bunch of good news. Uh, we're making, uh, progress. Uh, I sent a progress report to the council, but I want to share a few things, especially with, with the residents. We want to thank you. We've raised almost $7,000 in less than 30 days for this cause. Um, we've paid our liability insurance, again, another year. I could give Mr. Zab another copy of that if you, if you want, the current one starts April 9th, uh, so about our liability insurance. Um, we are, we have an architect who's visiting the property, uh, he's doing the plans now. Uh, he anticipates he'll be done about mid-April, mid to late April, and we got the, um, application for the planning review, uh, from Mr. Lad, which I'm going to fill out with, with our architect, get, uh, get that in to them. We're concentrating on the roof. That's our number-one priority. Um, we're ready, we are ready to start the roof, actually. We've used a best method of, uh, best practice approach to this. Uh, we have visited the Howe House in West 47 West Exchange Street. Uh, they re, it's an 1824 historic building. They've restored their roof with a synthetic slate material. It has 50-year warranty, 50 to 75-year warranty. It's affordable. Plus, we have, um, a roofer now who, who's experienced with slate roofing, who has volunteered his time to do this. So we're prepared, we are prepared to start the roof. We could buy the materials and, um, have a roofer to, to do the work. Also, we got a, I had PSI go back for the asbestos. They've tested the roof, and I have the asbestos report, and I'll give Mr. Lad an update copy on that. There is no, there's no asbestos detected in the, in the roofing paper, the flashing paper under the roofing, uh, not, there are no detections. So, uh, it was the same guy who did the 2008 report was out there. I walked through the whole house with him. He showed me everywhere where asbestos had been identified, where we have to be concerned. We take it seriously. We will address it whenever we're doing work that would involve any asbestos displacement, um, to have a certified, um, can, or whatever they call them, certified containment specialists to do that. Uh, so we're doing that. Um, gosh, forgot what I was going to say here. We're going to be, we'll be up for our, we replied for the National Register. That's going to be considered in 45 days. That would, uh, that's the application to put the Longwood Manor on the National Register. Uh, that's through the Ohio Historic Association. Again, getting back to, to just the one point, we would like to, um, I'd like to, to, based on a precedent, we'd like to get the permit for the, um, roof, uh, reissued to FIC builders. They are going to be the general contractors, they're, they're going to cover the roofer who's doing the work, the liability on that. We're hoping to move forward with that, you know, before, uh, we have to go through the whole planning session. I know that has to be done, um, but we do have a precedent. Last year, the, the building department issued a permit for the beam and, and the, uh, roof to and reconstruction. Uh, the roof permit expired. Uh, we would like to, we were hoping to be able to present at least a plan on the roof to the building department so that we could get started. It's a visibility issue. Um, I know the mayor has, has, has said that there's complaints about that ratty old tarp. We can get that off, we can get the roof done. We have the money, uh, we have the, the labor to do the work. We're ready to go on ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Lad, does, does, are you in agreement with the synthetic slate they've selected? Is that okay with you?
This is, this is the first time I heard of it. I'd have to take a look at samples. I don't have a, a problem with it, but I'd have to take a look at it, at the product. Um, we met with his architect, which I got to say, he's got an excellent architect who understands the whole process.
Great.
Uh, we met with him, and he is in agreement with every step of the way. Um, you know, we, we set aside, we said, look, this is not politics, this is the building code and the codified ordinance, which, we looked through every single step of every point that was brought up, and we were there for a long time, and everything he agreed to. He agreed, he says, absolutely, this is the way it is. He explained it to John, he says, look, the city is not trying to make a, you, give you a hard time, this is the way the process goes.
Go ahead.
We need plans from him for the roof, and the architect said he will work on it, and that's first step. We're not asking for it in the big picture of things. We will, we can issue a permit just for the roof only, but I need to have the plans because there are some structural concerns with that roof.
And, and great, you take care of the technical things.
Sure.
My, my reason for asking you is a question, and maybe a question that has to be directed to the law department.
Okay.
I'm trying to, you know, it seems like we got a group that's really moving, made some really good progress.
Yes.
Raised a lot of money in a very short amount of time.
Yes.
My question then is, since this is a city building, and even though the, the renovation is being spearheaded by a private organization, it is still a city building. Do we need to have some type of approval process to authorize the installation of this product on the roof?
You're talking about through the planning commission?
I'm not sure whether it's through the planning commission, through council...
Well, generally, on something like this, I would want this to go to planning for the change of use.
That's, that's... Well, I'm just talking about the roof.
The roof itself could be looked at by the city architect and the Saks, and he could look at architectural features.
That's, that's fine, but then my question is, and I'm just being a nitpicker, and I apologize.
That's okay.
But I'm looking ahead, and I want to try to avoid problems. Do we need to have council or the mayor or someone sign off and say, yes, this product, we want you to put on the roof? That's my question. I don't know if that's...
That would, that would be the, up to the planning commission. They would have control.
So the planning commission has authority to approve the slate?
For architectural features.
Yes. And, and council and mayor don't have to be involved in it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're going to move on with our regular agenda items, starting with ordinance number 21-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to author ordinance 21-2013 for its third reading by title only.
Second.
In ordinance providing for the 2013 annual appropriation.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 21-2013.
Now I need a second.
Second.
Okay, just before I go for the roll call, this is our budget, folks. It has to be passed by the end of March, so we have our budget laid out for this coming year. Um, council has been working furiously on this for months, and so is our finance director, Scott Slab. So the end result is that we have something where we're giving you the best bang for your buck. What's your pleasure? And roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Ordinance number...
Mr. Mulner?
Thank you, Josephine. Yes.
Ordinance number 21-2013 passes. Moving on, ordinance number 25-2013.
I'd like, I'd like to offer ordinance number 25-2013 for its third reading by title only.
Second.
In or, in ordinance authorizing the renewal of the placement of land in an agricultural district with reference to the property at 9541 North Bedford Road.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 25-2013 according to law.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-2013 passes. Moving on to resolution number 28-2013.
I'd like to offer ord, resolution 28-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please. Second.
A resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Alyssum Kellogg to the position, uh, to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
And what's your pleasure?
I move to pass and post resolution 28-2013 according to law. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Moving on to resolution number 29-2013.
I'd like to offer resolution number 29-2013 for its, uh, second and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
A resolution acknowledging and approving the Director of Finance to file on behalf of the City of Macedonia a grant for financial assistance from the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources under the Nature Works Grant Program for the revitalization of Sugar Bush Park.
And perhaps, Scott, you can give us a real brief synopsis before Mike gets into the next one.
Sure. This is a 7525 matching grant for ODNR, which would be a replacement of the playground equipment that we took out of Sugar Bush last year because it was aging and unsafe, so we're hoping that we'll get this, and I want to thank Jennifer Budo and Janelle Melchenko for writing this grant, and, uh, and also the second one that's following that is basically same for the same, uh, piece of equipment, but it's a, it's just a different grant that ODNR offers, another opportunity to get that.
Very good. Good job. And resolution number 30-2013?
We got to vote on 29.
We have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that we pass and post resolution 29-2013.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Now, we'll move on to ordinance number 30-2013, which everybody here knows is still working towards that funding.
I'd like to offer resolution number 30-2013 for its second and third reading by title only.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
A resolution acknowledging and proving the Director of Finance to file on behalf of the City of Macedonia a grant for financial assistance from the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources under the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the revitalization of Sugar Bush Park.
All right, and what's your pleasure on that?
I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution number 30-2013. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Resolution number 30-2013 passes. Moving on to ordinance number 31-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 31-2013 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
In ordinance ratifying the decision of the Board of Review Macedonia Occupancy Program Audit Committee's decision granting the Appeal of Great Day Improvements LLC and amending the... the MOP agreement with that company.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, just so we're crystal clear on this, a no vote would state that we are not willing to amend the existing agreement. Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
A yes vote, votes it down.
Or, no, it amends it?
I'm sorry.
Yes, would amend it.
A yes would amend it, a no, okay, I got you. I want everyone else to be on the same page.
Good.
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 31-2013.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Mr., Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Mulner?
No.
Ordinance 31-2013 fails. Moving on to ordinance number 32-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 32-2013 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a consent agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation granting consent to perform maintenance on the I-271, I-480 within the city of, city limits.
And what's your pleasure?
I, I move that we pass and post ordinance number 32-2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
If anybody's wondering, alls we're doing is giving permission with this last ordinance. And we need to do that, but we don't, it doesn't cost us anything. Ordinance number 33-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 33-2013 for second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post?
In ordinance accepting the Rowanhold Plan for recorded purposes only and renaming that street Abraham Drive.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we pass and post ordinance 33-2012 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Okay, just so we don't have confusion, Rowanhold is a street right where the bridge is being built right now on Highland Road. Rowanhold was named after a company by that name, Rowanhold. There's actually two halves to the street. There's the north half, we have a lot of businesses on the north half, and there's a south half, south of Highland. The south half has only one business on it. It's Mr. Abrams, who's been there for at least 30 years, probably more. He was one of the first to organize the Chamber of Commerce. He's, he's a very, very loyal businessman, and he asked us if we would change that because Rowanhold no longer exists, and we were more than happy to comply. So, Mr. Abrams, thanks for being with us for so long, and it's now named after you. We'll move on to.
34.
Ordinance 34-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 34-2013 for its second reading by title only.
In ordinance adjusting the salary of council effective January 1, 2014, in order to comply with the minimum, minimum earnable salary to earn full credit as mandated by the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System as set forth in Ohio Bill 343.
Moving on, ordinance number 35-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 35-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post?
In ordinance instituting a senior water maintenance and emergency fee payment program.
And what's your pleasure?
We're gonna have a roll.
You go.
We need to say pass and post.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to want to adopt it now.
Before I offer it to pass and post, I'd like to explain to the public that this is another example of an ordinance or a resolution that was brought to us by the residents, in this case, Mr. Loparo. And you get a lot of good ideas from our citizens. Keep them coming. I move that we pass and post ordinance number 35-2013 and post according to law.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance 35-2013 passes. It's getting better for our seniors all the time, and that's a good thing. Ordinance number 36-2013.
Ordinance number 36-2013, I would like to offer that ordinance for its first reading by title only.
In ordinance freezing all fees for Macedonia residents to the Macedonia Recreation Center.
Moving on to ordinance number 37-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 37-2013 for its first reading by title only.
In ordinance creating an annual user fee for non-resident users of the Macedonia Recreation Center.
Moving on to ordinance number 38-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 38-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post?
In ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Greve Dodge, I said it the Italian way, greve, I'm sorry. Greve, it is greve.
You're right.
Yeah, I got a little.
You were thinking.
I'm sorry, there is a greve in Tuscany. Dodge relative to the purchase of four police vehicles.
Scott, a little quick rundown to show our line of thinking in doing it this way than the way we used to.
Yes, sir. We normally do purchase two to three cars a year, depending on the need and also how much money we have left over in capital. So the idea is that we were gonna purchase eight, turn over our fleet, and then go out for, we get less than, about 2% interest for First Merit Bank was offered. And this way, it'd be almost paying the same payment every year for the next four years, but at the end of this life cycle, we'll have a better resale value of this fleet. And it'll reduce maintenance costs because we'll have the eight cars that's not gonna have any kind of transmission problems or usually the fleet maintenance problems that they have with older cars. So I want to thank Christian Costello that's on the Police Department. He outfitted these cars and looked at the different base prices, and statewide was a part of the state bidding process this year. And, but he's, you know, went through the different options and pared them down to what they need. So I want to thank him for doing that.
Thank you. What's your pleasure?
I move to pass and post ordinance 38-2013 according to law.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance 38-2013 passes. Moving on to ordinance 39-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 39-2013 for a first, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post?
In ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into a lease purchase agreement with statewide Ford relative to the purchase of four police vehicles.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we pass and post ordinance 39-2013 according to law.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance 39-2013 passes. What we're doing here is we're buying two different type of vehicles so that we can see which one we're gonna get the performance, better performance from. Ordinance number 40-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 40-2013 for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post?
In ordinance creating new section 13506 of the codified ordinances authorizing the Director of Finance to certify to Summit County for placement on the tax duplicate of the subject property any and all fees assessed by the codified ordinances which are delinquent.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 40-2013.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 40-2013 passes. Moving on, ordinance number 41-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 41-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post?
In ordinance amending section of, hello. In ordinance amending ordinance number 98-2012 regarding new section 16122 of the codified ordinances recently adopted that created compensation for interim appointments to vacancies.
And what's your pleasure?
Move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 41-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 41-2013 passes. Ordinance number 42-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 42-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post?
In ordinance confirming the appointment of Sharon Sipotter to the position of full-time administrative assistant to the City of Macedonia Service Department.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I'd like to amend ordinance 42-2013. It's my understanding that the part-time employee is becoming a full-time employee, which means that the pay grade would go from three, pay grade three to pay grade six. Pay grade six starts at, I believe, 230, and she's currently receiving 250, or 1256. So I would move that her salary be set at 1256. Is that her current salary?
My understanding is yes.
So that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay. Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
The motion passes. In the job of administrating and filling positions, it's always the, in our minds, to try and keep the costs down. And the way it was set up with the people that are now replacing people that left and went to other positions or retired, the total cost was going to be less. The person that was working this job before Sharon was making more money than Sharon would be making with an increase. So the administration and my department had, have a duty to try and fill the positions at the best price we can, yet be fair to the people for the amount of work that they're doing. So I'm a little disappointed that that happened tonight. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? There was a lot of discussion about this matter during work session, about part-time versus full-time, and about more pay versus less pay. Let me just add this. When a person has performed well in a job and they've been in a part-time position, it's very, very common to give that person a full-time position at a higher rate of pay because of their excellent performance as a part-time person. And I, I had the opportunity to speak with Sharon. She was very excited about this job. She's a Macedonia resident. And I, I don't feel that this is being fair to her. I hope that council could consider the fact that if you're going to continue to attempt to keep people in part-time positions, you're not going to eventually bring them up to full-time positions at the correct rate of pay. You're going to lose good people, and you're going to affect morale in a negative fashion. But that's why I voted no. Now, to hire this person, I do want to see this person hired because she's such a benefit to the City of Macedonia, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands, Mayor, that when a person's part-time and you're paying them a certain wage and they perform well and you bring them up to full-time, you're really saying to them, "Hey, you're doing a great job. We determined that you're worth more than, say, 12 bucks an hour that we're paying you, that you're worth 16 bucks an hour, and we want to keep you, and that's why we want to bring you onboard full-time."
Thank you. What's your pleasure?
Oh, I, okay.
What's your pleasure?
I move to pass and post ordinance 42-2013 according to law.
Roll call.
I need a second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
If I may, really quick, the issue at hand, and what we discussed in the work session,
session, was that this was a thirty-three percent raise going from part-time to full-time. How many of us out here have gotten thirty-three percent raise in our life? That was the issue. No, nothing to do with the lady. I'm sure she's fine. I've never met her. I'm sure she'll do well. I'm sure going on through time, she'll earn that money, but that's a substantial amount of money to earn just from going from part-time to full-time.
And I think you have to also consider how that's gonna affect other employees when somebody all of a sudden gets a thirty-three percent raise. That's, that's why I moved to amend it.
Yes.
Moving on. To ordinance number forty-three, two thousand twelve.
I'd like to offer ordinance forty-three, two thousand thirteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Uh, an ordinance confirming the appointment of Brian Truman to the position of full-time maintenance worker in the Department of Public Service.
What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass in post, according to law, ordinance forty-three, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-three, two thousand thirteen passes. Ordinance forty-four dash two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number forty-four, two thousand thirteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an independent contract agreement with city planner services, for city planner services, with Brian France.
What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass in post ordinance number forty-four, two thousand thirteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Moving on to...
Mr. Mulner?
Sorry, Nick.
Well, I, I'm trying to get it out. Trying.
Yes.
I need to write.
Ordinance number forty-five dash two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance forty-five, twenty thirteen, for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to, um, to enter into an independent contract agreement with the City of Stowe for Economic Development Services.
Okay, we're gonna move on to resolution number forty-six, two thousand thirteen.
Ordinance, I'd like to offer ordinance, uh, or resolution number forty-six, two thousand and thirteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution accepting the Urban Tree Canopy Assessment and Tree Planning Grant, and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
And what's your pleasure?
Move that we pass in post, according to law, resolution number forty-six, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Are there any legis, other legislation or motions this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider veto ordinance, number nine, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass in post, according to law, ordinance number nine, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Can we get clarity again on this, just to we're all clear? I'm sorry. Just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page. And no vote would mean that we support the veto, is that correct?
Correct.
And then a yes vote would be to continue with the time clocks.
At this point, yes.
All clear? Roll call.
Mr.?
Sorry.
Man. Mr. Barker?
So noted, Josephine. No.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
No.
Are there any other legislative actions? Hearing none, let's move on to correspondence from the clerk.
I have none, Your Honor.
Mayor's report, um, we will be experiencing some activities that may affect traffic in Mastoni in the near future. Route eighty-two will be resurfaced from our western border, which is by Giant Eagle, east to Interstate two seventy-one bridge. Since it is just resurfacing, it should go pretty quickly. This construction will be followed by the Route eighty-two Phase Three reconstruction at the east end of eighty-two, so that's towards Twinsburg, in two thousand fourteen. What this will mean is that Route eighty-two will be completed in all phases and in great shape by the end of two thousand fifteen. It's taken years of hard work and putting up with aggravation, all of us when we're driving, but the resulting infrastructure we will have will be worth it. It used to be that people went out of their way to avoid going through Macedonia. Soon, we will be in great shape with our main east-west infrastructure completed. That will result in property values increasing, and our main source of revenue, city income tax, paid by the employees working in Macedonia flourishing. Just yesterday, I went to check on the Highland Road Bridge, and they were pouring cement on the bridge deck. Even in less than perfect weather, Kenmore Construction is pushing ahead, and we're looking at a possible opening of Highland Road in the summer. There's a huge project looming, and we just found out about this, in that Interstate two seventy-one bridge over Route eighty-two will be receiving major reconstruction. It will widen and replace the bridge deck. It will be widened from two to four lanes. This project will range in an area from where Interstate two seventy-one and Route eight cross, all the way north to the Cuyahoga County line. That's all within our borders. The forecasted project schedule is the summer of two thousand thirteen, there will be a public involvement meeting. Project sale, May two thousand fourteen. Project award, May two thousand fourteen. Begin construction, June two thousand fourteen. End construction, October two thousand fourteen. Keep in mind that all this will be happening in our city limits, so that's bad news and good news, because all the construction workers that will be involved in this huge, huge undertaking pay a city income tax. So, it's money in our cities' pockets. I attended the county of Summit's State of the County Address with my department heads yesterday at John S. Knight Center in Akron. I am very conscious of the advantages of networking with our county and other community officials. Sharing time with them often manifests itself in better service to our taxpayers. I'll tell you, people say, how? Well, networking and getting my department heads involved and recognized by other communities is part of displaying the teamwork that Mastoni has, and just how lucky I am to have the staff that I do. Our county executive, Russ Pry, gave a very informative and positive State of the County Address. In my mind, Russ Pry is by far the best and most efficient county executive ever. Under his leadership and direction, Summit County and its form of government is becoming the new standard of excellence. This executive and county council form of government has recently been copied and instituted in Cuyahoga County. They were a county that was ravaged by government scandals, fraud. They changed the form of county government to what we have in an effort to emulate something that works and works well. There are a couple of statements Russ made that still resonate my mind, and I'm quoting him when I say this, and I'm trying to turn a page, so give me a minute. I believe the willingness to work together is the key to process and progress. The ability to touch, trust each other is paramount. The desire to make our community a better place, and doing the right thing for the right reason, is a must. Hard work, determination, and the follow-through is key. He also said, in this county, if you give your word, you will do it. In this county, if you are a leader, you will lead for the greater good. In this county, if we find a problem, we will find a solution together. Don't we wish that this philosophy could be the same at all levels of government? Redwood Acquisition LLC will be coming to plan, planning about property located behind the Girl Scouts Building, along with a proposed assisted living community. So, both those things are good things. That's the end of my report. Moving on with committee reports. Any committee reports?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna point out that, um, I attended the Community Expo. You also attended it, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanna report that there were a number of positive comments about Macedonia from Macedonia residents, and also from residents of other communities concerning our police, concerning our fire, concerning our rec center. And it was a very, very positive event, and, um, people are very, very pleased with the city right now, Mr. Mayor. And they were actually very, very praiseworthy of council, and praiseworthy of the mayor, and the department heads. I got so many compliments on how well the snow was done this year, and, um, how well our fire responds, and how well our police respond. So, I, I think it's important that people understand that. Secondly, I also attended the, um, function at the rec center for the Easter Bunny Breakfast, and, um, that was extremely well-attended. In fact, there were no seats available, and everybody had a great time, and it was just incredible, uh, just the number of, of people that attended, and it was also incredible what a good time they had, because they came on a Saturday morning, and at one point they were lined up, uh, just outside the door. And the whole event was just done really well, and coordinated really well by the people at the, um, rec center. Um, I just wanna add one more thing. During public comments, we had two people come up and criticize the efforts of our council. And this is a council, I wanna remind you, that has widened Route eighty-two, that put a new bridge over Route eighty-two. This is a council that is building a bridge over the railroad tracks on Highland Road. This is a council that established a quiet zone. This is a council that kept the city solvent through a difficult financial period. And then both people come up here and criticize council, and both of these people, it's, and I always find this so hypocritical, they're both receiving substantial governmental pensions. And to the point where one of them even ran for mayor and said, I'm not gonna take a salary. So, the whole point here is, Mayor, is that I, I just wanna let this council know, and the city know, and the people who work for the city, that you're doing a really good job. And a lot of times, we do self-examination, and during the work session itself, we argue, as Shane and I did tonight, but we exchange ideas, but we're making good progress in this city. Easy to criticize, very difficult to accomplish things, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
All right. Planning Commission, uh, our latest Planning Commission meeting was canceled because of lack of submittals, but our next Planning Commission bill, uh, meeting is gonna really be, uh, a lot on the agenda, and a lot of the things that are on the agenda are, um, important to this city. So, remember that Planning Commission meetings, number one, they're public. Number two, they are now taped, so you can see a Planning Commission meeting, just like you see council meetings, not only on cable, but also on our website. So, I just wanna remind you about that. Are there any other committee reports tonight? Hearing none. Jim, department reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I just recently signed an agreement with Gable Elevator. That's for the elevator at the rec center. It's, uh, the maintenance program that will go in effect June fourteenth, when our existing agreement with Dyson Crump expires. The old agreement cost the city four thousand dollars a year, and was a five thousand-year con, I mean, five thousand-year, five-year contract, sorry. The, the new agreement will only cost nine hundred per year, and is a yearly contract. So, it's a savings of thirty-one hundred dollars this year alone. Uh, and, uh, once our, our city elevator contracts up, uh, we will also contact Gable and try to save on that also. I wanna report that the tree projects on the Gardens of Highland is on schedule, and should be, should be completed by May fifteenth. Also, the tree project that's on Summer Road, which is, seems to bother a lot of people, but it's something that had to be done, um, the Phase One should be done by next Friday, April fifth. Then we're gonna go out for bids on the remaining twenty-five trees. We took care of all the worst ones first, the ones that we thought were a danger. And also, I wanna thank council for passing, uh, resolution number forty-six. That's the Urban Canopy Tree Grant. We're gonna do that this year, and, um, that, in case anybody wonders where that's at, it's actually on Shepherd Hills between Iroquois and Crow. And the way that's gonna work, we're gonna prepare the tree lawns probably around June, but won't plant the trees until the fall. So, uh, that's probably what our arborist said, Tom, is the best time to do it. And I wanna thank Tom, and Sherry, and Janelle for doing this, uh, grant that they worked on last year. Uh, that's it, Mayor.
And I'm glad you clarified that about the trees, because the trees are almost like a landmark in Mastonia, where you went on Summer Road, and the huge trees were leaning out over the street, and it, it has some, um, aesthetic appeal. People like that, uh, and you are definitely cutting them down because we have to, not because we want to. So, we gotta make that perfectly clear. Okay, Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to first thank council for approving Brian France again tonight. Uh, Brian is an asset to the Building Department, and we appreciate that. We have a, a new office furniture warehouse going into twelve sixty-one Highland. They're gonna be occupying a hundred thousand square feet, and they're doing a build-out with us right now. We have several things, as the mayor mentioned, on the next Planning Commission agenda, uh, which will include an assisted living center, which, uh, I did see some of the drawings today, as they, they brought in for the Planning Commission, and I met with, uh, the applicant. It is, uh, it is absolutely gorgeous. I think the Planning Commission will like it. Uh, it is three stories, and has, uh, approximately ninety-eight units, uh, in it, so it is a, a nice complex.
Where's it located at?
This is by the Girl Scout.
Right on the cul-de-sac.
Not the back part of the cul-de-sac. It's gonna be between, uh, South, South Bedford and the Girl Scout.
What's the zoning classification of that property?
Um, that one is a BO, if I'm not mistaken.
A BO?
I believe it is.
Which permits that type of construction?
It does permit it, yeah.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, I'm trying to think, it was a BO, I guess.
What's the reaction of the folks in the homeowners association there?
I haven't heard anything yet. I haven't heard anything, but this won't back up to them. This is gonna be, as you're just pulling up onto by the Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts are on the right, this is gonna be on the left. And then the rental, then there's rental units, which are separate from Redwood, that's gonna be in the back part, and it'll back up to the other residential homes.
Rental units? And what kind of rental units are those gonna be?
Those are upscale. Those are the ones we talked about before. It's a separate project than the assisted living center. They're two different developers, um, but it's Redwood, um, is the developer on those, and they are upscale.
Well, what's upscale, Mike?
Um, architectural features. They're, uh, more like townhome-style rental units, and they're approximately gonna go for thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred, uh, a month rental.
I'm gonna rent my house right now.
Actually, uh, this company, um, is the company that bought the home from the Board of Education, from the schools, so they're gonna be building these homes in Sagamore, and they also are going to be building them in Hudson. So, they're going to be coming into this area very strong. Mastoni is only part of the, the big plan they have in mind, so.
On the engineering side, uh, South Bedford Road, the pavement cores were done today, and, uh, we will be going out for bid beginning of April. Uh, our EPA Phase Two Annual Re- Our EPA Phase Two Annual Report was completed this week also. I just want to give congratulations to Kayla Malani too. She passed her certified permit technician. Couple of years ago, I believe it was in 2000, end of 2010, we passed an ordinance allowing her to train and Andrea to train. And Kayla did pass that certification, so I want to congratulate her. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to also add that Jim failed to mention on that 46, 2013, the resolution for the tree canopy grant. It's actually also, not only are we going to plant 88 trees along Shepherd Hills Boulevard, which we just did that drainage last year, and it's $35,000 we're going to receive from ODNR. And a lot of this work was, can be done with in-kind contributions. So when our service department or Parks Department goes out and assists with these trees, we're going to document the time that they're spent and the materials and we're going to be able to use that portion of it to pay for itself. And along with the 88 trees, our arborist, Tom Rhodey, picked out, they're going to be species that are pretty nice size, they're actually average about $200 apiece, and they'll be not invasive to sidewalks and other type of thing. And also, this grant actually allows you to do a tree canopy assessment, which ODNR considers a city with 40% or more tree canopy coverage over the entire city is basically like a green city. And it promotes not only aesthetics, but also water drainage and, and keeping the, keeping the atmosphere cool and for air quality also. So it's a really nice grant. And again, I'll reiterate, Sherry Kuzma helped push this together at the last minute of November when we applied for that, Tom Rhodey and then Janelle. So it was a good team effort and I'm, I'm real happy to see that go through. One of the other things I've been working with, with Mr. Diglatano was good news. Obviously, no one likes to pay that Northeast Ohio Stormwater Project fee that was forced on us. But one of the good things about it is that we're able to capture 25% of those fees, which is estimated that will come back to the city for over $200,000 this year. We have to identify the projects and then we go out and do them and we track the money. So we can do these projects in-house and that's what I'll be working on with Mr. Diglatano. He's excited about it because we can do stormwater, catch basins, crosswalks, and cleaning even the culverts, and we'll get reimbursed from that money. So that, along with the tree planting and other grants, should be able to keep the department busy this summer. And a quick, some information about the fire department that was, they did, and this is all Tim Black's portion, but they did over 1,500 calls last year. And when you break down the property tax, we only receive the five mils that's coming up for renewal this year. The five mils is important for our budget because it, it does apply 20% of the entire revenue budget. Last year, it brought in just shy of $400,000. It was $397,000 that we received from that property tax, the five mils, and it's up for renewal. But his total budget is $1,990 and 60%, 65% of that budget comes again from our income tax. So our, again, our fire or police does not get funded through property taxes. And when you break that down, if the number of households in Macedonia is 4,236 households, the property tax collected per household for our fire department is only $93.74 a year. And according to the current census, Macedonia has a population of 11,188 residents. So if you break down that amount, the average residence, resident pays only $35.49 a year or $2.96 a month in property taxes. So really, our engine here, whether it's police, fire, or even service department, relies so heavily on an income tax that almost the city can't function without it. That's the only report I have.
Scott, two things. The one time I called the fire department in my over 25 years here was to shut off a hot water pipe that had burst. And their pretty quick response with that super glove they had that could turn a valve in hot water saved me probably what it would have cost me in taxes for 10 or 15 years. So the investment that I've made in the fire department has come back to me many times over. And I'm sure as I get older, I'm going to set my apron on fire someday, or I'm going to burn the leaves in the backyard when I'm not supposed to, or the cat's going to run off through the fireplace. So we all know that the fire department is the best value in town. Second of all, have we ever been reimbursed for the pavement costs that we've generated with our water main leaks on Highland Road and Route 82?
No.
Does the water department pay us back?
No.
All right. Have we sent them a bill?
Yes.
And they're not paying it?
There were some negotiations that were going on and I don't know what, what progress it is at this time.
Are we going to lose our shirt or are we going to come out okay?
I'm hoping we're not going to lose our shirt.
Okay.
Could we maybe have a report next, Council meeting on that?
Yes, sir.
It's actually what's turned over to the law department.
So will the law department make a report?
Yeah, it seems like there was a lot in the last few years. I think there was a couple on Twinsburg Road as well, wasn't there? Find out all the ones that are outstanding.
You know, and Mr. Miller, expounding on what you just said, I listened to NPR this morning about the fire department and mostly out in Midwestern states like Illinois and stuff. There was a report on there, how many people lose their lives in grain bin accidents when they go in and try to clean the grain bin or bring the grain down from, into the auger. And, and basically, you know, those people are so specialized in the training that they have, you know, and I'm sure we have the same tools, but they have a program where they know where to cut into the grain bin and so the grain flows outward. And then also, they have a device that would actually, you might speak of this, be able to, if a guy's in there and he's getting covered up with grain, they push that down in there to stop him from being crushed. So it's, it's kind of a, you know, you take for granted the fire department's going to come out and just put the fire out, but there's so much more training involved because it, from a chemical leak to, you know, they, they handle it all. I really do appreciate the services that they render.
Well, and then we have to keep in mind that in Macedonia, our rating is a four, Chief? Yeah, our rating?
Yes.
Okay, having a four rating means that every home in Macedonia pays less for fire insurance. So when you have the best, it comes back to you tenfold all the time, giving back. So that's an important consideration when you're trying to weigh costs. The fact that you're saving money on your fire insurance because of the skills of our fire department.
Mayor, I just want to interrupt one quick time. My house fire insurance has gone down in those 25 years, even though the size of my house has gone up.
See?
So once, if you add those two savings together, I'm breaking even in my money that I pay taxes to the, go to the fire department. I have broken even over that quarter century.
Okay, so you're up now, Tim, after that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the kind words. Our carpet is done down in our senior game room, was done last week. The pool table is set to be delivered next week sometime. We bought it over here at the Great Escape. They're bringing it in and setting it up, so we will have the pool table up and running. On Friday, April 5th, at 12 noon, we're having a soup cook-off with the Macedonia Fire Department and our seniors. We're putting up our best soup. It's Tim Best Soup, Tortellini Soup, and it's going to be put into the contest. And if anybody would like to come to that senior-wise, it's 330-468-8300. Contact Sherry at extension 432. There is, if you're bringing soup, there's no charge. But if you're just coming to eat soup, there is a small charge to help cover some of our costs. But we're putting up our best soup, Tim Best Tortellini Soup, and it's very good. So we're hoping to be able to place in that at least. And that's all I have, Mayor.
And that's all good stuff. We also have a piece of exercising equipment that's in our room already. And that piece of exercising equipment was actually tested by the mayor and I lived, and it's good, and it doesn't hurt. It works both your upper and lower body. So this will be something our seniors can benefit from. You don't have to go on it and be a superstar and try and break any speed limit, but if you just go on it and work those arms and legs, you'd be surprised how much better you feel. So that's available right now with the pool table coming next week. John?
I'll be quick, Mayor. Like to thank Council for the vehicles. I know our fleet is getting older and it's much appreciated. And on Monday and Tuesday, the Police Department will be doing some training at the high school and some of the other schools in the district. We'll be doing some training with all the area police departments, Northfield, Boston Heights, Sagamore, and some of County Sheriff's Department. So some small-scale training at the schools, but we're trying to, trying to stay on top of active shooter type scenarios. And the school's been gracious enough to work with us with all of our requests, so they've given us access to the school. So I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Very good. Mark?
Hello, Mayor.
Is Nick here?
No.
UG, I miss him, so I'm looking.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think you need to announce that we have an Easter egg hunt at the recreation center 10 o'clock on Saturday.
Very good. Thank you.
Is that true, Josephine?
It is.
And it has no end time?
It has no end time, according to their calendar. So you may be there for hours.
Looking for eggs.
All right. Is there any new business?
Yes, Mayor, I think with the advent of the new pool table that I challenge you to a employee or in-house tournament for all the marbles.
Okay. That sounds good to me, as long as it doesn't cost any.
She's actually going to that on the pool site.
All right. Anyone else? Any other business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I understand from the law director late this afternoon that Councilman Mike Miller has not signed a letter which would allow settlement of the pending claim against the city by the Ohio Police Benevolent Association. The draft of the letter was provided to Mr. Miller two weeks ago and copies to all of council. Now, this, this letter was approved by the Ohio Police Association and would have ended this claim with no further legal cost to the city nor findings by the State Employment Relations Board against the city. A resolution has been circulated to council this week and I've been, and I have asked the council clerk to bring extra copies for those. Would like to have them at this time. It's my understanding that, do all of the council members have a copy of the resolution?
I'd like, Josephine, you have copies?
I do.
Is this just the, the resolution here, not the letter? Because I never actually saw the letter.
It's just the resolution.
Okay, I have the resolution on the iPad here.
The Ohio Police Association has agreed to accept the resolution of censure as settlement of the case and will dismiss it at no further cost to the city. They have not approved any other form of letter, nor any other type of resolution for settlement of this case. Therefore, in order to save the taxpayers the cost of defending this claim and to not expose the city to potential charges and sanctions from the state board, I'm agreeing to move for adoption of the resolution. And clerk, what's the number, please?
47.
Pardon?
47.
Of Resolution Number 47. And I would like to point out that the law director has also advised that Mr. Miller should not vote, but abstain since it could be considered an ethical violation to be voting on a matter that may benefit an individual legislator who is the subject of the legislation. So I'm introducing Resolution Number 47. I would like to second. I will be voting on this, Ken, because it's a council matter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm sorry, who else?
The union's complaint is against the city and not me. Clerk, what is the, could you take a roll call on this, please, so we have clarity? We had a second, but...
We did have a second. Mr. Barker?
This is just to put it on the agenda, right? Not the actual voting on the actual...
There's no suspension of rules here.
Okay, but what, what am I voting on?
You're, you're...
On the actual, on the actual resolution?
I'll let Mr. Goodhead explain.
Yeah, there's, this isn't an ordinance, so those normal rules that apply, a simple majority vote of councils, all that's necessary. And I believe that's all Mr. Martin's put before you.
Could you take a roll call, please?
Ms. Darrow?
Well, did you go to Mr. Barker first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Barker?
You know, the only problem I have with this, I, I never saw the letter and I spoke to Mr. Miller before the meeting and he, he really wants to have his day in court, which I don't really have a problem with him having his day in court. What I have a problem with is if it's going to cost the city lots of money. I don't know. I mean, I know there's a hearing scheduled for the 29th.
The time for mediation's passed, so the only way to resolve this without actually going down a serve and having a probable cause hearing is either have the letter signed or pass the resolution tonight. Those are basically the two options that the city's left with to avoid additional fees being expended on this matter.
But what if Mr. Miller was, I don't want to speak for him, but you said you wanted to have your day in court. What if the city wasn't paying for that?
I didn't do anything to deserve the complaint from the officer who isn't even named. I disagree with the entire thing. It's a political joke. And anybody out there at home who's watching or here who wants to know the truth, the full truth and nothing but the truth, can contact me at any time. My rights to free speech have been challenged in this and I will prevail.
And that's why I asked you. You, you wanted to have your day in court, but not necessarily in the city's time?
Doesn't apply to me. The complaint is against the city.
You're still not answering the question.
This is all a ridiculous waste of time and foolishness.
The complaint's against the city, so the city would be paying, obviously, if we went down on the ULP.
And if he wanted to do it by himself, but he has not answered that question.
Technically, a party in that sense is, it would be the city who's the party.
And we have insurance, right? Does the city have insurance for something like this?
I can't say whether it's covered by the insurance.
Scott, do we have insurance? Thank you, Scott.
So the insurance will pay for the law department to go down and defend? I'm confused.
We have to file a claim with the insurance, we have a $500 deductible. So then if we turn it over to our insurance, that would kick in and they would start to review it.
Are we guaranteed coverage, Scott?
You know, I'm not an attorney. I would think if there's some kind of an issue for a councilman, that he would be covered.
Well, what if the, what if the act was considered intentional?
Again, I don't want to speak as an attorney.
It's something, we'd have to look at the policy and discuss it with the insurance company.
There's too much up in the air right now and you need to know by the, tomorrow's the 29th, as I recall, right?
Mr. Martin, if I may, I got a phone call from a, a previous council member who told me that Mr. Miller, we have insurance and Mr. Miller can get an attorney to represent him, I mean, Mr. Miller can get an attorney to represent himself on this, on his behalf, so...
Well, the point is, I presented this resolution. This is a resolution of censure. Everybody's familiar with what the issue is. I would just like to take a roll call on it. And however... You're actually not familiar with the issue, Mr. Martin, because you have never heard the truth, my side of the story. Mr. Miller, I sat through a executive session and prior to that, I conducted, I conducted another executive session. I've conducted two executive sessions on this matter and each of them lasted approximately one hour. And you had an opportunity to speak... You were in a different executive session than I was. You had, you had an opportunity to present your case in the first executive session, which you spoke quite profusely during that time. And you also had an opportunity to meet with council, the mayor, and the city attorney at the second executive session. Why would I want to meet with the very same people who have caused this whole issue?
You said you wanted to voice your side of the story.
No, I never said that. I said, "He hasn't heard my side of the story."
Well, none of us have, that's the...
Of course that. You might as well vote on this legislation because you're fully informed. Mr. Barker, I think we had two executive sessions to examine what took place in this situation. So I, I'm fully informed. You're mistaken, Mr. Martin. I'm not going to debate this out on the floor because there's a difference between what you believe, Mr. Miller, and in this case, I've had an opportunity to talk to the people who are involved in this. And quite frankly, I do not want to prejudice...
And quite frankly, I do not want to prejudice your case by saying anything.
How am I doing out there? Doing okay? All right. It's Mr. Martin or me? Which one do you want?
There's been a motion that's been seconded and a request for a roll call.
I would like to have a roll call, because I don't care for the atmosphere that is, this is turning into. If Mr. Miller wants to present a case, then he's going to have an opportunity to present it to the proper people.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. I mean, no. I changed my mind. Darn. No.
Mr. Miller, uh, Mr. Muller?
Yes.
It's 3-3.
It's up to the mayor if he wants to...
He wouldn't break a tie in a council medic.
No, this is council-matic action. I would suggest an executive session where council can go and, and hash it out if you'd like, because this is council-matic. The mayor has no role in this.
I just think that we just took a vote, and the vote is 3-3, and, and it doesn't pass, and I have nothing further on this issue. If Mr. Mill, if Mr. Miller feels that he can't prevail in another venue, he will have that opportunity.
That's called the American way. We have a constitution on the wall there. We ought to read it more.
Are there any, is there any other business this evening?
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The word's adjourned.